Order the Wednesday, May 24th Planning Commission meeting. And may we have a roll call, please?
Chair Lowe.
Here.
Vice Chair Quilty.
Here.
Commissioner Andry.
Here.
Commissioner DeBolt, absent. Commissioner Gross.
Here.
Commissioner Sol Focanick, absent. And Commissioner Zellmer.
Here.
Thank you. May we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the virginity and justice for all. Okay, oral communications. At this time, any individual in the audience may address the Planning Commission and speak on any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission. Please state if you wish to speak on an item on the agenda. Remarks are limited to not more than five minutes. Anybody like to speak just in general? Sure.
Good evenings, members here. Tonight, I just wanted to say, my wife, I gotta get home quick, so I came in just to make some speech and then leave. I usually stay longer, but I gotta go. She's gotta get back to work. But I just wanted to say, you guys are doing a great job. And I'm very proud of what you're doing for our city. We support your decisions that you've made in the recent months and years, pretty much, along the line. And keep up the good work. And I know that we're all trying to do the best thing for our city. And the governor, you know, is trying to get us to do a lot more than we want, but we're all doing our best. So keep up the good work, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you don't mind, I know we usually have you sign in to speak. Or you can just tell us your name, it's fine, just so we have it for the record. Sorry about that.
My name is Frank Marchese.
Thank you.
I'll fill this out over here.
That's okay.
That's fine.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks. Anybody else like to speak? We'll move on to the consent calendar. I don't think we have any.
There's nothing on the consent calendar for this one.
Perfect. And there's no public hearings. And so we're gonna move on to the staff report. Item eight, the staff report. And regarding the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination Systems. And I'll let staff take over.
Yeah, so this is a receive and file report. Tom will go over what NPDS is. This is something that the city, again mandated by the state, is basically, I look at NPDS as storm water, right? And so, again, it's very interesting. Again, we as a city have to make sure that we have NPDS protocols in place. It's handled a lot of times by our code enforcement or our building and safety people division. But again, Tom will, it's an educational item that will teach you about NPDS and what the city is expected to do.
Okay, so Chair Lowe and members of the Planning Commission, you've heard this, most of you have heard this before. Hopefully, I'll make it exciting. We'll see. And, oh, now it's gonna reboot on me here. This always goes crazy during the meetings. Here we go. Okay, so this is the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, which we always say NPDES. It's got a million acronyms that we use for it, but basically what it is, is keeping pollution from going to the ocean, is what it's about. And you can see on our website, that symbol that says H2OC Los Alamitos. And if you click that, it takes you to the county's website. And they have interesting facts on there, like what you should do with, you know, for landscaping in your lawn and stuff like that, to use low amounts of water and stuff like that. Because using high amounts of water ends up putting pollution into the ocean. So, and it froze. This always does this. Yeah, which one? Can click that one? Yeah. There we go. Okay. Yeah, so why another presentation? This is a reminder to protect rivers, creeks, and our oceans, and ensure that activities that we do don't result in storm drain pollution. And according to the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, forty percent of waters in the U.S. are not fishable or swimmable, and that's because of pollution, not just because there's something wrong with that particular lake or river. Eighty percent of ocean pollution is from land runoff, and it's like fertilizer and things that you put on your lawn that cause a lot of the pollution. Most of the pollution that's in the ocean, you don't actually see. And to comply with the city's municipal storm water NPDES permit, we actually pay for a permit each year to be able to discharge water into the ocean. And it's, you know, since it's like, unfortunately, it's like a sewer, the way we use it, we end up having to pay to clean it up. And so that's what the permit's about. And storm water pollution is anything other than rainwater going into the storm drain system. And I'll tell you a little bit about that here. A lot of people believe that the sewer and the storm drain are the same thing. They're not. They're two different pipes that go two different places. When you flush your toilet at home, it goes to the sewer. When you, when rainwater goes down the street, that goes down the storm drain. And what goes in the storm drain goes straight to the ocean. It's not cleaned like the water that's in the sewer. And so quite a bit of what we discharge with water goes straight to the ocean. And that left picture there is a picture of Seal Beach on a nice day after a rainstorm. So, and we, of course, see a lot of closed ocean, the beach days and stuff like that because of every time it rains, the beach gets covered down there. And it's unreal if you've ever seen it in real life. So, yeah, so dirt, oil, chemical, or trash that goes in the storm drain will meet you at the beach. And when I was a kid and stuff like that, we used to burn our trash in the backyard. We used to change the oil in our car and pour it down the storm drain and stuff like that. And no one ever mentioned this to us, that we were completely destroying the ocean that way. So, you know, it's interesting to know. The part of our permit, we have certain things we have to do, like me give this speech once in a while, and that's public education. We as a city are supposed to stop what's called illicit discharges, which are, you know, people putting pollution into the storm drain. Construction, we make sure that, for instance, they have like those straw waddles around the construction, the fences with little short silt fences that keep the stuff from blowing out. So we do a lot of stuff about that. Planning and land development, we do this thing, I'll tell you about in a minute, called a WQMP, which every property is eventually supposed to have, which is where the water stays on the property rather than goes into the storm drain. And the way they do that is infiltration, BMPs, and BMPs means best management practices. And you see them, they're like a tree coming out of a storm drain kind of thing. You've seen those at the hospital and stuff like that. Water goes in there and it soaks in for a while, and then if it fills up and there's too much water, then it goes to the storm drain. But it's, the tree in that well is to clean the water before it goes into the storm drain and into the ground. Let's see. And then we do a lot of record-keeping about it. We collect records on how much trash we collect through the street cleaning and things like that. And we're always trying to improve every year how much we do of collecting the trash off of the streets. And I'll skip that part. The things you can do are dispose of trash in the trash can, of course, and recycle bin. One thing people don't know about, though, a lot, you see this around town, is that dumpsters need to have their lid closed. And so that water, the rain doesn't go in there and then oil in it and stuff pours out onto the ground. We also now require, if you build a new trash dumpster enclosure, it has to have a roof on it now and stuff like that. Let's see. Okay. And limit the amounts of pesticides and fertilizers you use. That's an important thing. A lot of people don't really read their fertilizer bag when they're spreading it. They tend to just kinda throw it out there like they're feeding chickens. But try to read the instructions and keep it to a minimum. Never allow construction materials to go into the gutter. When you mow your lawn, the grass clippings are not supposed to go into the street and down the gutter. And of course, pick up after your pets. Then, when you clean your pool, a lot of people in the past used to just stick a hose in there, suck on the end, and pour it into the gutter. And you're supposed to actually let it dissipate for a couple of weeks so that the chlorine dissipates before you do that. And if you do allow the pH balance to become better and the chlorine to go away, you can actually pour it into the storm drain. But if you smell chlorine or anything like that, it's not ready to go yet. And so make sure that the chlorine is dissipated from the pool water before you drain that. And then, of course, the oil leaks out of your car. If you have hazardous materials, there are a lot of storm, I mean, household material waste collection places. There are some on the screen, so you can write those down later or ask me for them anytime, and I can give those, that list to you. And that would be for paints and oil and the batteries, things like that. We have these buckets here at work that we collect batteries and stuff like that, and then take to these places.
Can I stop you right there?
Sure.
And we call it HHW, Household Hazardous Waste. Our waste hauler, Universal Waste, offers a quarterly pickup of that at your residence. So you could call them once a quarter, and then they'll come by and pick up the HHW from your house.
I just had him pick up a bunch of paint. It was great.
Oh, yeah. An interesting thing, too, there's a paint collection place in the county.
Rowan Williams.
Yeah, you can do that.
Too, because I have a can, so I'm gonna take it over there.
Right. And there's also a paint collection place in the county. With the, you can go in there and pick up free paint that people didn't use and drop off whatever paint you don't want. So if you have some color that you don't like, or something purple, or, you know, whatever, you take it in there and just trade, exchange it for another color. So that's kind of a cool thing. So a lot of people paint their house that way, so you can just pick it up. And then illicit discharges are what we have to keep track of each year through our code enforcement. And we, for instance, if a car wash company is washing on a parking lot and they're not collecting the water as they do it, then that's an illicit discharge, because it's got soap and stuff like that, and it is going into the storm drain. So it's anything other than storm water, like I said before. And here are some examples. If you see water running down the gutter like this and you see bubbles in it and things like that, oftentimes, that's somebody, a contractor or something, maybe cleaning out the cement mixing bucket, whatever that thing's called right now, I can't remember. But the next picture is, I forget what that one is. Well, but anyway, if you see this kind of thing, please let our code enforcement officers know if you have the guts to do that. And they will give brochures to the contractor and explain to them that they shouldn't be doing that. Did you have something to say?
Yeah, you know, and talks of illicit discharge, there are many, many illicit discharges, right? Tom's going over a lot of them. You know, if you empty your pool water into the storm drain without a proper filter, that's an illicit discharge. Washing your car and having the water go off into the storm drain is an illicit discharge.
Actually, that isn't.
That isn't? Okay. I know there are some exception. I think one exception is OC, or fire. They get an exception, so they came down to, you know, you had your house on fire or something, they used that water, you know, that's an exception. But contractors, if you hire them, they should know the rules of NPDS. I believe that is part of their certification when they become a licensed contractor. They try to limit the use of water to clean up as much as possible. So an example here is, let's say you're gonna do something with gravel, right? They should be putting a plastic tarp underneath the gravel and then put the gravel on it. Sometimes you'll see them come on, they should put the gravel on the ground. That's not illegal, but they can't be using water to clean that off. You need to sweep it, right? If you have concrete work going on, right, and it's a small concrete mixer, right, you have to have, again, tarp underneath the concrete mixer, right, just in case any of that concrete falls on the ground. Again, the tarp picks it up, okay? So again, there's a lot of illicit discharges, and our code enforcement is very, very wary on this, because if we as a city do not prove that we are diligent, we will get fined, right? I'm not gonna name names, but we have neighboring cities that has been fined a tremendous amount because they didn't do their due diligence in terms of making sure that this type of illicit discharge was not, you know, tracked and it was kinda, again, not done. So again, our code enforcement division tries their very best to make sure that NPDS violations are kept at a minimum, again, because the state is basically keeping a tap on what we do.
Yeah. If trash goes down the storm drain, it's $20,000 per incident, is what it is. And that goes to, if the city is found to have ignored it, we get a $20,000 ticket and the person who did it gets a $20,000 ticket. And boy, do they collect it. They really do, so. And the kinds of things that can be discharged are, like your air conditioner condensate, when it's, you know, collects humidity and it pours out of a tube on the side of your house, that's okay. Irrigation water, which is your lawn watering and stuff like that, if that makes it into the storm drain, that's okay. However, we would prefer if it stayed on the lawn instead of sprayed, watered the sidewalk, of course. And non-commercial vehicle washing, you can wash your car at home, you can do it on your driveway, or, but it's preferred if you would do it on your grass, but make sure you don't break your landscape pipes and stuff like that when you drive across it. And preferably use a soap that's biodegradable, and there's a lot of debate on what's biodegradable right now, so, you know, do the best you can.
Tom, does that count if, like, you have a car wash company come to your house?
No. That does not count. Yeah.
On Saturday and Sunday, my neighbors, there's like three on my block every week.
And they're supposed to collect it. They can, they can clean it on the property, but you see a little thing like a pool that they put underneath. A lot of them use a tarp and put pool noodles on the sides and roll them up like that, and then they get a shop back and just stick that at the lowest corner and suck up the water as they go. And then that water has to go into the sewer. And that's for commercial washing. And that's because it's a business and they, of course, do a lot more washing than most people do at home. So right now, it's okay to wash at home. It's okay to do fundraisers. It used to not be okay to do, like, church fundraisers and wash cars without collecting the water after doing it, so. Let's see, like I said before, dechlorinated swimming pool discharges are okay. Rising groundwater and natural springs, that's okay. We don't see a lot of that here.
I wonder if that's a, if it's natural groundwater, but if it's ongoing natural groundwater.
Yeah, that's, that's fine, yeah. It's okay for that to go in the storm drain.
Although the City of Los Alamos wouldn't permit it, so.
We didn't?
No.
What did we do?
Oh.
I'll have to hear that story eventually. So emergency firefighting, you know, whatever they use to stop a fire is okay, you know, all the foam and stuff like that. And then, like I said, with pool discharges, make sure it's not green, of course, was the other thing. And free from odors. You can smell chlorine. And that's, you can also get pH measuring strips at pool stores and measure it yourself if you want to do it quicker than waiting a few weeks for it to dissipate. And here's the mobile detailers. Let's see, they need to discharge their water into the sink or toilet or something like that, but it needs to be cleaned at the sewage plant, not at, not in the ocean. And you can discharge water into vegetation and onto grass and stuff like that, as long as it's soaked up by that grass. It doesn't, doesn't leave the lawn and go into the storm drain. Yeah, that's kinda covers that page. And here, let's see. Okay, these are different kinds of illegal discharges. You'll notice the bottom right that has oil in it because it looks like a rainbow. So that's, that's probably not good stuff going down there. The top right is probably soap. The, going into that storm drain in the middle top is probably someone was trying to soak up something, or it's cement or something like that. If, like he was saying, you're supposed to, like, put down cat dirt to collect up oil and then sweep it up, but don't wash it down the storm drain after. That kinda defeats the whole purpose. And some businesses you'll see with, with water pouring out of the door and soap or some kind of stuff in it. We had one business in town here that poured three tons of peanut butter into the storm drain a while back.
What?
And they had to steam clean the entire storm drain system. So from where their building was to the creek, it was pretty wild, yeah. It was, it was a lot of peanut butter. And then, when you see things growing out of the pipes and stuff like that, like that view right there, something might be going on that's not, not, not the best for it. Oftentimes, that means that there's fertilizer going down the storm drain. Fertilizer causes things to grow, so you end up with a lot of moss growing in those areas. Okay, so that was that page. And then, like he was talking about before, about the construction discharge, Ron was saying, you know, don't, when you have a, like a pile of sand like that, cover it with a tarp. Put maybe rocks on top of it to keep the tarp from being lifted up. And put sandbag, not sandbags, it's now gravel bags you're supposed to use, because sand ends up in the storm drain, too. And so gravel bags are good to put around. And if, if that is rained on without that tarp on there, it, of course, can go to the storm drain. And those tickets are pretty steep, so it's, sometimes you feel like when something goes down the storm drain, it's out of sight, out of mind, but these guys go in the storm drain, so they tend to be able to track. And then when there is construction, you will notice they put a screen-like material underneath the storm drain grate, and then they put gravel bags around it. They're supposed to do that in the next storm drain that's downhill from the construction site. And that's what those are about. And then when it's, when it's about to rain, they're actually supposed to take that, take that out, so that it doesn't back up and cause a flood in that neighborhood.
I got a quick question. I have seen a few times around town where people had good intentions of doing their front yard, but it's a dirt pile.
Yeah.
No grass growing. Any repercussion for that?
Yeah, if it makes it out to the street consistently, where somebody is able to notice it, then yeah, that, that is a storm drain discharge and could cost them a lot of money for doing that, so. The biggest problem we have are the decomposed granite in the parkways. People like to use that, those are, that's meant for, like, making a sidewalk through your yard.
Yeah.
It's not meant for using in the parkway. And when the rain hits it, it just washes right over into the storm drain. And same with little pebbles. You can put big pebbles, as long as they don't migrate into the storm drain, yeah.
Unless you got a five-year-old kid that...
That kicks them out, yeah. Exactly. Okay, let's see. Oh, and what should you do? There's, first thing most people do is they call me, which is a good idea. And I call the county. If it's a, if it's a really out-of-hand thing that I don't know how to clean up, then the county has trucks that come out, and they, they have pumps to pump up the water. They have people that come out hazmat suits and scrub the ground and all that stuff, so it's done all the time, so it's, it's easy to call. Me, first of all, is, because I'm easy to find, but that number, 714-955-0674, is the number to call. And if you need that at any time, just give me a call and I can direct you. And then 911, of course. Okay. And you'll notice lately that we have changed the way the storm drains look. We've gotten grants to put in, first of all, those screens that you see on the right side there. They're called automatic retractable screens. People often think that they're just a screen that's stuck there. It's actually not. It's got a little bucket behind it. And when the water hits a certain amount, it lifts up that screen and allows everything to just go down the storm drain. What it's for is to hold back the trash while the trash, I mean, the street cleaners come by and clean up. It's to hold trash there for them to pick up. And then if it makes it inside, then we have these next things that are the second from the right. That's called a CPS unit, and it's a connector pipe screen. And that's, covers where the, the pipe goes into the storm drain system out of the catch basin. And they've, we just put those in this year. That means that our Public Works guys have to collect a lot more trash than they used to inside of those, those catch basins. And we clean them once a year, and we'll see whether that increases. Now, two times a year, there we go, so.
One of the things I noticed of those things, we're going into summer, so it doesn't necessarily matter now, but especially on Farquhar, it created a lot of flooding, because the maple trees wherever on there, the leaves would get caught there.
Yeah.
And basically flood the street. Is there any prevention measures that you can...
We send the Public Works guys out all the time.
Just to...
To push it in there and clean it out, yeah. And it's, it's actually not caused by the screen necessarily. Sometimes, and, you know, there are weird situations where it does, but usually the screen opens up and the leaves are just so overwhelming that they just don't go down.
That's what I mean, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Get in there.
Exactly.
Now, our Public Work Division does a really good job, so when we know that there's a large storm coming, like, sometimes I feel I'm a weatherman, we send them out there to do the cleaning before the storm comes. And again, we increased our, we used to do it only once annually, now we're up to two times a year to clean that inside of the catch basins. But see, I also know this, too, is we recently done a storm drain master plan, so the specific Farquhar. Remember, the city was built, you know, a long time ago, the infrastructure, so there's actually, specifically on Farquhar, the storm drains aren't wide enough for the amount of water that's being whipped over there. We have plans in place to hopefully go in there and to either widen the storm drain or add more storm drains, so. or add more storm drains, so.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah. And something also people don't realize is that the street is a storm drain. It fills up during rainstorms, during the first flush is what it's called, which means that a normal rainstorm, it, it fills up from curb to curb often. And that's, that's normal. It's meant to do that. But it, it, it fills up and then it's supposed to dissipate out into the storm drain system. So if you, if you do see, you know, deep water and stuff like that, that's because this is a flat area and the street has to be our storm drain in order to, to take care of that. And our water table is also, in some places in, in this town, a foot below the surface. So it's, most places it's 10 feet, but we've done a few alleys where you may have noticed water just bubbles up in them and we end up having to put slurry seal and all this stuff in there to, to stop that. Yep. Yep. So only rain down the storm drain is the, the cutesy little phrase to use to remind people of that. But if you have any questions about, you know, anything that's going on, just give me a call, you know. This, we, we have to talk about this all the time. As a city, we're, we're constantly talking to other people about it. We have flyers that, I mean, bulletin, not bulletins, the little trifolds things, pamphlets, that we hand to restaurants and stuff like that. Restaurants are not supposed to wash their, their mats outside in the, the alley and stuff like that and spray them off because that goes down the storm drain. The people are not supposed to wash out their own dumpster and spray it out. You actually can call the trash company and they will bring a new one if it, if it gets smelly at some point, so. And your own little dumpster at home, don't, don't spray it out and clean it at home. Just call them up and say, replace it this next time you come out, so. And that concludes my, my little story there.
Very good.
So I have a question. First off, I think our maintenance department did do a really good job this winter because we got hit hard. In my area, in the past, would flood and we didn't flood that bad. So I know they were working hard. When we look at all our storm drains, where does the main part go? I mean, we get all these small ones, but it has to go somewhere to a larger one to go toward the ocean. Where is that?
Goes to Coyote Creek. And there's, there's two places where it goes out. It goes out, but it's pumped out of the northern part of the city at the Finley Pump Station, which is on Finley. And then there's another one down lower a little bit. And then it goes into this part of Coyote Creek where there's like wattles that are strung across that keep the main trash from going down. And then there's absorbent materials and stuff like that in there.
Call them boom.
Yeah, boom, that's it. Yeah, and that also catches people. It's, that's what it's also for.
I've noticed that, no.
Yeah.
So when they're testing, where is their ideal to check, just see what our runoff is? Do they do it at the stations?
That's really a good question because we used to be one of the testing sites here. Are, where that, that boom is, that they used to collect it there. And we found, they found that we had a high amount of ammonia collecting there. And it was, and ammonia is a sign that fertilizer is breaking down in there. So we sent out letters to everyone in the northern part of the city to cut back on fertilizer. And immediately we went clean for like four different testing times. And they no longer test in our city, which is cool, so. But, you know, the, the, every city has two or three points where they collect and make sure that the water's clean, so.
And do they randomly test or do they have assigned testing times?
It's assigned. Yeah, and it's, it's once a month. Yeah.
If Tom says they're testing on the boom, I think the, the closest boom is in Cypress, along Coyote Creek. Yeah, so I know it's in Cypress right before it hits into Los Alamos.
Yeah, any other questions?
Okay, we'll move on then. Items from the Development Services Department.
Yes, thank you. I, I do have a few items. I'd like to start off that HCD, the state's HCD, has certified the city's housing element. We received a letter at the beginning of the month, a couple of weeks ago, again, certifying the housing element. Second thing here is we have the short-term rental survey out. You go visit the website, it'll take you to an online survey that we have out there. It's about eight questions. So you'll see in the upcoming few weeks outreach to, again, inform residents of the city to take, partake in that survey. We're gonna have that survey up for a couple of months, so it'll be up till the end of July. At that time, we'll do an analysis and then bring the results back to the commission. Next thing here is I want to remind that our next council meeting is held on Tuesday, June 20th. It's not gonna be on the third Monday as usual. It's gonna be on Tuesday, June 20th. And I want to introduce our new department secretary. She's sitting over my right shoulder here. Her name is Gabriela Martinez. She started, today is her third day, all right? So she comes from the city of La Mirada. She worked there for approximately 13 years, I believe. And, you know, we took her from that city and brought her over here. And so she's gonna eventually take over Michelle's spot over there in a couple of months of training and everything. So again, welcome her and you'll see, you'll be seeing emails from her. If you have any questions about packets or anything like that, Gabriela is your point of contact on that. I also brought Irving Montenegro Jr. I believe you met him before. He is the Development Services Manager. We are gonna start to transition where I am gonna leave, coming to the Planning Commission. He's gonna take over for me. Doesn't mean that I won't ever be here. I will come in, you know, once in a while to, you know, discuss some items with the commission. But, you know, the, we have, you know, if you ask why, basically is that, Development Services, I attend three meetings monthly. So I have a traffic commission, the planning commission, of course, the city council meeting. Sometimes the city manager requests that I go to the budget standing committee, so I have a lot of night meetings. So again, to give Irving some growth opportunities, we decided to have him kind of lead along with Tom and our city attorney here, the planning commission. But again, this is not a goodbye. I will be back once in a while to check in on how things are going here and to kind of discuss, like I said, items before the commission. So again, you'll start seeing that phasing out in the next month or two, okay? That's it. Thank you.
Excellent. Commissioners, any reports from the commissioners?
Everybody's looking at me. I do, I would like to get on the agenda clarity on the allowance of being able to work on a property on a Sunday. I was not directly involved, but a friend of mine was shut down for doing work on his property on Sunday. And I think it's something that, when I looked at the code, it was very unclear as to what can and can't be done. So I think that code should be reviewed and looked at and discussed at our next meeting. I think it was 17, 20, 20 or something like that?
Yeah.
Something.
Yeah.
So it, it was shocking to me that, that, that he was working on his own front yard with a couple of friends that were helping him do the work and he was shut down. He wasn't paying anybody. It wasn't a contractor. And code enforcement came and shut him down and, and, you know, he's trying to beautify his house and to not be able to, to do it himself.
Well, I mean, code enforcement's allowed to work on Sunday, I guess, huh?
I didn't know that either.
Yeah.
Nice to me.
So it, it was just a little bit, I was just a little shocked. And when I found out I could bring it up in the meeting and then we can discuss it and possibly change it, I want to do that, so.
I think this, the, what we need to do is that we gotta figure out if anybody else wants to address that or bring that up as well. And if we, if we, if we all have to vote on that, right, we have to have a consensus that we want to bring it up, is my understanding.
So it's a motion.
I'll second it.
And just to, basically to discuss that item, discuss that, discuss that point in the code and just to, just have a discussion about it, is what we're, what we're talking about.
So again, just to be clear, the motion is to review and discuss the code that is talking about, again, I don't...
I think it was 17, 20, 20.
It's actually a noise ordinance is what it is. If someone goes over a certain decibel level on a Sunday, they, they are given the ticket based on that, so.
I think it's like 60 decibels.
Yeah.
And speaking in a, in a normal tone is over 60 decibels.
That's pretty low.
We actually, I got, actually, you got a decibel meter out and ran it next to a hybrid car and their fan, a fully electric car, and the fan was higher than 60 decibels. So I, I just think that we are, you know, you can cite that to anybody for doing practically anything on a Sunday and I think we, it's gotta be addressed.
Well, the decibel, the decibel rating also...
I would just ask that, I mean, we, we have a motion, we have a, like a request to bring an item back for full discussion that has not been placed on tonight's agenda, so rather than devolve into a full discussion now, I'd rather move forward with the motion. And then if that carries, we can come back and have that conversation at a future meeting.
We have a motion to discuss that part of the code and we have a second, right, Mr. Gross? And so, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay, that passes. We'll bring that back at the next Planning Commission meeting.
I just am really curious.
Any other commissioners have anything?
So this weekend is Memorial Weekend, so everybody be safe. When you're enjoying it, remember the reason we have it. Since one of my best friends growing up is one of the reasons. He died in Vietnam. So think about them.
Excellent. And with that, I'll adjourn the Planning Commission meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.